Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for our September 24, 2025 Committee Meeting here. I call this meeting to order. Committee issues for this evening will be for October 7th and 21st of 2025. For the legislative agenda as follows. Up first, we have an ordinance vacating a portion of North Court Avenue. I will ask Sister Flowers to speak.
Sure. So this is related to 15 East Philadelphia Street. North Court Avenue terminates community at the property of 15 East Philadelphia. And the owners of that property, Grotto Community Benefit, have asked that we vacate. So if you look at their property, the street actually, the public street actually bumps into their property a little bit. And they're looking for us to vacate the portion that goes into their property. And so there's just a line that cuts directly across. Because this is a public street, it does have to be vacated by ordinance. And they're working on getting us a legal description and a little bit better exhibit that shows exactly what's going on.
Yeah, because I looked at this initially, I saw a diagram, it didn't make sense. And so I went to Google Maps, or my husband did. And I wasn't sure, you know, Google Maps shows North Court Avenue ending at the end of Gift Horse. And so I wasn't sure whether they were asking for all. I wasn't sure what gas was. But I did go back there and I took notice that there are businesses using, I need to pass those down, please, that need access. And so the diagram on Exhibit A, you know, conflicts with the Google image. And so I wasn't sure, you know, where that 26 feet really started and whether it was going to impact any of these businesses. When I walked back there, I did have an opportunity to talk to some of the, you know, businessmen back there and to let them know they weren't aware that Grotto was making this ask, which, you know, might have been a nice thing, you know, for discussion to happen. So it doesn't look like it's going to impact any of the businesses, but they understand that there's going to be a, what, 28 days before they can come to vote. There will not be any individual notices sent to people along that alley, but they'll have to watch for public notices. And the representatives here from the barber shop in Gift Horse, are they allowed to ask any questions or comments if it's okay with you?
Yes, that's fine. I want to see too if council has any further questions. Does council have any questions or comments?
No, I think you covered it.
Well, I did. It's in the same vein as, one, if that's vacated, does that make it difficult for people who come down Court Avenue, the ability to turn around and exit? And number two, is there a survey that supports the, what they're requesting?
Yeah, so there was actually a plan before council for 15 East Philadelphia in July 15th, I believe. And so as part of that plan, there was a survey done that, which is where I believe I pulled the exhibit that I attached. And so, yes, those distances and those lines have all been, are all the direct result of the survey. There's no width change through North Court Ave. The public portion is only 11 feet wide. So whether it terminates, you know, 26 feet sooner doesn't really change how people turn around. I did speak to the attorney, I've been speaking to the attorney for Grotto's for a while now. He did state that the access there to Gift Horse through that, you know, through the end of that alley there won't be blocked off, because I know that was a concern. That's all I've got at this point.
And is it true, once it's vacated, it can't be unvacated?
We would have to reclaim it like we would any new street, so through the eminent domain process.
And that's very difficult, as we see in northeast neighborhood with York Street. And so I see that notice to vacate, I'm automatically thinking, is this in any way, for interest of a business, going to impact other members of the community?
Thank you. Is there any other council comment? I believe we have representatives here from the public that would like to comment on this matter.
Oh, I would ask.
Serge, you can please come to the mic and state your name. Thank you so much.
I'm Mickey Napier. I'm with Gift Horse Brewing Company. All I would ask is that we're kept abreast of any new developments, any types of drawings or anything that's going forward. But we just found out about it today, so we really haven't had a chance to look into it too much. But from what I see, it shouldn't affect us all that much, but the guy that wants to build there, he's been very cooperative with us. So I feel like there is something that we can work out, but we would like to know any changes or any new drawings that come out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment regarding this matter?
Yes, basically, my name is Patrick Winter, owner of the Relicuts Barber Institute there.
Say your last part again, Patrick?
Winter. Patrick Winter, owner of the Relicuts Barber Institute. My purpose of basically, I have something to say. I've been there for 20 years. The owner of that property prior before was very open to all the businesses in the evenings and stuff like that. We run the business there with these double shifts. And as far as the back parking there is totally taken away. We're in no car cannot park behind the garage and stuff like that. So the reason why I was here today, I thought they was blocking everything off. Now I see that it's more up that side, which would affect this gentleman's business. And I think that the company that's going there should be leanest. Now, when you guys change it and then they move, maybe not five years from now, because their business fail, what happened to the new owners? So I guess that we should take this in consideration, where you should leave just where it is. I understand it's an alley and you want to prevent parking in a certain way. The church is right there next door and the church, they actually leaving. They actually came there last week and now got a ticket and they came and see me. What happened? I said, oh, you take it to the city, they just put the sign up. So again, while you guys extending it, I guess there will be more parking less for this gentleman right here. And the evening time, it's taken away. So I think that you guys should take it in consideration where you should leave just as it is, keep it as an alley and work out where this section for them to pull in, because I'm not sure what kind of business is taking there for them to need that much space. They don't give us no parking across the street for 20 minutes or five minutes. As soon as I parked there just to unload stuff, hey, Relicuts, you got to move. I understand. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Council President Washington, can I just respond to a clarification? So just to clarify, we're not, the city isn't proposing, or what's in front of council, is not a proposal to vacate the entire alley at all. The whole alley will stay public except for the last 26 feet that actually dips into the 15 East Philadelphia property. So people probably really aren't parking there because it's only, it only gives you access to 15 East Philadelphia Street, that end building. So the actual alley itself wouldn't be affected.
I have to apologize for that. I wasn't sure and I was very uncertain. And so I had to clarify what was really happening, but I didn't do that until after I spoke with you. I was concerned, I wasn't sure how much we were vacating at that time.
Is there any other public comment regarding this matter? I make a motion to place this on our October 7, 2025 legislative agenda.
Second. What? I thought because it's a vacate, it has to sit for so many days.
Well, we have to introduce it.
We have to introduce it.
Oh, we introduce it?
This is for us to place it on the agenda.
Okay.
So second, there was a motion, there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? That moves forward to be placed on our October 7, 2025 legislative agenda. Up next, we have a resolution authorizing an agreement with the County of York for Wi-Fi infrastructure. Now we'll hand it over to Sister Flowers.
You guys are going to get sick of me. So this is part of, this is part of the project where you guys have already allocated significant ARPA funds. The county is looking for, and I guess let me back up a second. So they're doing a large-scale Wi-Fi project, as you guys know, and putting Wi-Fi points throughout the city. They have asked for the use of some of our poles to place Wi-Fi points. And so there are some of the traffic poles that they would like to use. They've started testing on 20 of our traffic poles. What they also need is our placement where the fire wire, I can't think of what the name of that is right now, but where the old
Game well?
Game well system, that wire used to go. And so we don't own the telephone poles, but we have a right to, apparently the priority system on the telephone pole. So through this agreement, we are allowing them to use our priority placement on the telephone pole for their Wi-Fi project. Once the Wi-Fi project is, so the game well system, this has been cleared with Chief Slinger as well as Dave Rudolph. We don't, the game well system at this point is completely defunct, it's not being, not being used. And then as part of this agreement, we do retain the right to that, that location on the pole if the county ever abandons the project or abandons that piece. So this is just a very simple MOU discussing, basically giving the county permission to use our location.
Thank you, Sister Flowers. Is there any representatives from the county here to address this? I have some questions, so maybe you can answer.
Okay.
I mean, I'm actually the technical advisor, so I can answer the question.
Oh, yes, would you mind coming up to the mic and state your name, please? And what you're representing?
Yes, and my name's John Dolmetsch. I'm actually with Wi Finium. We're actually doing the engineering and installation and have been working with First Energy and the city for positioning where the game well system is.
Thank you.
Say your name again.
My name is John Dolmetsch.
Say the last name.
Dolmetsch, D-O-L-M-E-T-S-C-H.
And who'd you say you were with?
Wi Finium.
I'll just guess that.
Can you spell that for us?
Yeah.
You're not even sure.
It actually, it used to be, it used to be big wireless. I mean, we are, you know, a city-owned, Business Information Group is in the city. I'm still a shareholder in that. So we just transitioned that project over to Wi Finium.
Thank you. One of my first questions is, I noticed in number two responsibilities B, is that I'm reading that, it says the city shall be responsible for providing any permits, approvals, licenses as required. Am I reading that properly, that we will be taking care of all costs for that?
No. So the county is actually handling the operating costs for, I believe, the first three years. This is just in the event, and we didn't discuss what permits would actually be necessary for the city. I can't think of any right now, just, you know, thinking like building permits, electrical permit, that kind of thing. That's what that piece is, just allowing them to actually place it instead of, you know, we enter into this MOU and then say, wait, you need two years of permits before you can install anything. That's what that's addressing.
Thank you. And then the poles, I noticed that we have some of our schools where the poles, where they will be located, is that the poles?
So, no. Actually, there's two MOUs in the works. One is with the city schools.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so that's a separate MOU to use the rooftops of the city schools. As was stated earlier, the city does not own these wood poles, they're owned by First Energy. But the city does own the abandoned game well system. And First Energy has notified everybody that if we can use that spot, it makes it a lot easier for the county to deploy this. So in some cases, the game well system has already been removed. And that's part of this project as well. So it's the removal of that, I call it a telegraph wire, because that's what it is for the old alarm system, and placing the equipment exactly where that game well system is in place today, which means not using any other additional space on the wood poles, which makes it easier for First Energy to give that approval to the county.
Thank you. Is there any other council comment regarding this?
I wanted to, sorry. So I don't know if you can, so the map was kind of hard to see and I was trying to identify the locations. Is that still fluid?
The answer is, it's, it's, it's still, what has happened is, there's a resurvey of every single area. It's about, just in New York City, it's about 800 poles. There's 200 or so in Hanover. And we're trying to pick locations that have the game well system on them. It's a little bit fluid, we're not complete yet. Actually, my COO Roger Hayes would be able to address how far we are. I think we're about 75% complete of resur surveying the poles and we're making an attempt to pick all the poles that have the game well system on them, because it's delicate bounds. We're trying to reserve residents in the city while picking the poles. It doesn't necessarily match up. We know we have some that don't have the game well system on, which we'll have to work, we're working with First Energy, following their rules. So that's kind of where we're at at this. It's still, it's still fluid at this point.
Okay, because I was trying to figure out what your coverage was going to be. And so I don't know that you can answer this question, but coming up in our agenda is the SafeNet. And that talks about placement on poles too. And I don't know if there'll be any conflict, they may be at different spots on poles or different poles, and I don't know if.
The answer, the answer, the answer is, so it's kind of a technical engineering perspective. So, you know, each pole has an area on it, it has things on it. But it also has, it's round. So it has things on the front, the sides, and the back. So the spot where the game well is, is the spot where the game well is. It's the entire pole. Now, there's some economic benefits of both systems kind of working together, especially from a power perspective, because there's power requirements for both systems. I'm actually here with Otto and Aaron and their team, we're the engineering team on that one as well. So there's some synergies between the two projects. What's happening on the, she mentioned it earlier, on the traffic poles, the county is paying for the upgrade for the power. So that power is already going to be upgraded. So it doesn't have to be, that cost doesn't have to be borne by another project, because it's already going to be taken care of by the county on those traffic poles.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other council comment or questions? Any public comment or questions regarding this matter? Is there a motion to place this on our, on our October 7, 2025 legislative agenda?
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? That moves forward. Up next, we have a resolution supporting the advancement of the York SafeNet Public Camera, Public Security Camera System. I believe we have representatives here from York SafeNet.
Yes, good evening. My name's Eric Menzer, 232 North George Street in the City of York is my residence, my address. And my role here tonight is as the Chairman of the Board of York SafeNet, which is a new 501(c)(3) nonprofit created to pursue implementation of the York SafeNet Camera Network. I want to emphasize one thing, which is that while Logos Works is a contractor and a provider to York SafeNet, as you're going to hear from in a few minutes, this proposal comes to you from the new York SafeNet nonprofit organization, not from Logos Works, as was characterized in a recent newspaper article. But it's not to say that it's not awesome, that we have Logos Works as our partner and our contractor on this project, and we're lucky to have them in our community working on this project. But just to be factually accurate, it is the York SafeNet organization that brings you this project. The full list of York SafeNet board members is in the proposal document that you have, beginning on page three. And we think we've recruited a great cross-section of representatives of different stakeholders to form our initial board. Now, I find myself in this role as the Chairman of York SafeNet, because I was the Chairman of Better York when we launched the study effort to determine the feasibility of what became the York SafeNet effort in 2021. Better York itself is a membership organization committed to improving public safety and economic development in the City of York. It was actually back in 2019 that we made reducing the plague of gun violence in our city our number one priority. That was when we did, for the first time, a comprehensive fact-based peer comparison and analysis that concluded that unfortunately, we did here in York, in fact, have a worse problem than many of our peer cities. Our initial response to those findings was supporting and helping fund what became the Group Violence Initiative, and we've made an annual contribution to that effort ever since it was founded. We also recognized that one of our peer cities performed much better than us on gun violence and crime rates in general, and that was the Red Rose City, the City of Lancaster. And that engendered interest in their nonprofit crime prevention collaborative and their public safety camera network. It was that realization that started us down the road that brings us here tonight. So as the York SafeNet Board, we're working closely with Logos Works as our organizing and operating consultant to implement this system. We think we've addressed the requests from city council to take the necessary next steps with the project, and we're hopeful for your support. And with that, I'm going to ask Otto Monroy from Logos Works to touch on a few highlights of our proposal next.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. As Eric mentioned, my name's Otto Monroy, President of Logos Works. And last time this proposal came before city council was in late 2023. And the resolution that was passed there cited four different things that were sort of homework that you had given us, things to go away, do some work on, and come back on. And we've completed those four things. We tried to include a little bit of a rationale and explanation of how we address each of those at a high level in your packet. And so I think you can see, just for sake of everyone here tonight, independence governance was the first item, operational plan with policies on how the camera network will be utilized. Number three was a detailed map of the camera locations. And number four, the completion of a capital feasibility study to ensure that we could actually fund this network. So we have gone down on each of those. I've also brought a number of folks with us who can speak to questions of the council. So the main thing that I wanted to do here at the podium is just to quickly summarize that we have indeed, from the governance side, incorporated the 501(c)(3). We've built a board that is representative and really well-qualified, so we're very happy with the progress of the board. There's some operational items yet to be put in place for that 501(c)(3). For example, we have not yet collected any donations or built a budget, but all of that we're teed up to do and should be forthcoming at the appropriate time. The policies and the equitable operation components, we worked with Donald Gator from Barley Snyder, who actually has served on the board of the Lancaster County Safety Coalition. So he had some practical experience in the neighboring city that we kind of had looked to as a peer city, and also has cybersecurity background and expertise. So that's a little bit of his expertise that we wanted to bring to this. And of course, our board has been through a couple of different iterations of those policies, and so we wanted to submit an initial draft. I also would highlight that most camera networks don't, you all as council members, you know, could be commended, and I think our board as well, because most camera networks are launched without policy documents. We're doing this before we've even raised a single dollar to plan and build this camera network. So we're putting those concerns about civil liberties and equities right up front and trying to make those investments and get it right right from the beginning. So the policies are there, attached to the packet for your review. The camera locations, transparency and community trust is really important in an effort like this. In addition to policies, where those cameras are located is really important. So we've attached a map with the 140 camera locations that are being proposed. Those were identified, those locations were identified by looking at the first round of work that had been done even before we were contracted, as well as consulting with our friends at the York City Police Department and saying, where would there be the best advantage around? And then the third consideration was, how do we equitably spread points of camera points across the City of York, so that no one neighborhood is especially targeted? So those locations are there for you to take a look at. The last point on the feasibility study, I think it's just worth maybe noting the, kind of the takeaways. Capex funding plus the annual operating funding is, are both considerations. How do you build the network and then how do you sustainably fund it moving forward? We went through and identified a number of prominent funders that we thought were important to interview and talked to them about both of those things. And from those conversations, we took away that the capex funding will be a little easier to raise than the annual funding. And so that's one key point. Annual funding will really require a public-private partnership, probably from some public entities as well as businesses and foundations helping out as well. Use of the network and kind of how the functionality and the benefits that we're able to see in the community are going to be key for folks, I think, getting. And I think also having the access to the city infrastructure is going to be a really key point for us to get past, so that folks are confident that this project has the capacity to really move forward. We will need to keep building our coalition. The funders that we talked to alone will not fund this, so we have some more work to do to continue to build that coalition. So with that, let me just introduce a couple of folks that we have in the room that might be helpful for you as council members as you think of questions. John was already at the podium with Wi Finium. They've been consulting with us on the more technical elements of this proposal. Don Gator's here, council, so if you have questions on policy, his expertise is here. Of course, Eric, our board chair, you already met, but Pastor Phil Kearney is another board member who's here representing our board directors. And of course, Aaron Anderson, our CEO at Logos Works is here as well. So with that, I just turn it over for any questions you all may have for us as you further.
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel, is there any comments or questions this evening?
I do, I do have some comments. Because I've engaged in this for quite some time, four years ago when I was running the council initially, this was really front and center and surveys were being held, public surveys across, to sort of test people's appetite, the residents' appetite for a camera system, a public safety camera system. And I was able to attend those, just to hear what, you know, hear people's opinions and how they were looking at it. And civil liberties, of course, was a big issue that did come up. When my term came, when my term started then, the issue was really front and center. And at that point, Police Commissioner Mulro invited city council to join him and some of his team to visit some cities that had public safety camera systems intact. So I was able to go to both of those visits, along with another council person at the time, our council president. And we went first to Wilmington and then we went to Lancaster. Wilmington was really interesting, because it was owned by the city and police. And it was a little more sophisticated process, they were able to collaborate with some federal But we were actually able to watch them and see, you know, talk with the leadership of the city, but also go in and quietly watch the system in place. A couple weeks later, we went up to Lancaster, and I know some people from Better York had already been to that a number of years before. Again, that was private and able to see the differences there. Again, we actually saw a call come in then, which was really interesting, and see the responses that went out to enforcement and went out to 911. The really key thing about both of those, which to me struck with, that you addressed individual civil liberties, was that with technology now, I know a lot of people are, you know, nervous about people looking in their homes, which is legitimate. But on both these systems, the windows are darkened. You don't, the technology is such that you do not see into the home. Another great opportunity that I had was to spend this time with some of our law enforcement and police commissioner, and learn more about crime in York City and what their challenges are. And one of the big challenges that Police Commissioner shared with us was that, was she was here.
She is here.
Oh, hello. I have disease, isn't it? Is that, explaining that crime is on the move, that crime is different than it was even a decade ago. And it takes a lot of partners. And it's not, you know, we used to think of a bad part of town or whatever, and it's just not the case anymore. Crime is Crime is moving throughout our community and into other, across municipalities as well. So what I really liked was the ability of this system to expand so that other, I know that other municipalities have spoken, I think, with our commissioners and say, hey, we'd like to be part of this at some point too, because they're leaving Springins Bay, I'm making this up, Springins Bay Township and going into the city, or they're leaving the city and going into West York or wherever. So the other concern that we, of course, we wanted to hear was, we were very concerned about, as a council, about policies and procedures. We talked to Lancaster about them. Their system was put in place in 2006. They couldn't do it today the way they did it then. I mean, they were right up front about it. They said, you know, because, as Otto said, they didn't have policies and procedures, they sort of just had current launch to go ahead and put the system in, and everybody liked it. Well, we asked about complaints. I'll say, not everybody liked it because, but both Wilmington and in Lancaster, we said, so, you know, what complaints do you hear? The complaints they hear are from the blocks or neighborhoods that don't have cameras. Why can't we have cameras too? And I thought that, you know, I thought that was a great thing to hear, to consider that it's embraced by those communities.
Thank you, Vice President Buckingham. Is there any other council comment or questions regarding this?
Yes, you know, I live on Unit Block of South Queen Street, and, you know, many times in a year, the police are knocking at my door. I have cameras out front and out back, and they're similarly going through the neighborhood. And so right now, what they're working with is a very informal, you know, public safety camera system, just, you know, hoping they can catch a homeowner and access, you know, disparate systems across city blocks. And so that slows down their ability to resolve an issue. And so I think putting something formal, predictable, and constant in place would be another tool. And what I observe has been a very broad approach to our crime issue in this city. And, you know, this is a really nice tool, not just for crime, but for, you know, lost children, adults with dementia that get out. I mean, there are many other uses for this in enhancing public safety. But I think, you know, it removes that onerous chore of policemen, you know, knocking at the door, and I've always said, please come on in, you know, I'm always willing to help, and I think most residents are. But to replace this informal system with a formal one, you know, it's doing the same thing, but now it has a constancy that's going to benefit the community.
Thank you.
I just want to tell you know that just for a minute too, because people did ask me and would say to me, well, you know, there's so many private residences that have cameras, why are they going to be incorporated into the system? There is also the element, especially with violent crime, that I understood from our enforcement team, is that people are sometimes reluctant to help because they fear retaliation in some cases. So it was just another reason that a public safety camera system is a better answer.
Can we look at the success with the Penn Park cameras as kind of a model for this? You know, crime has dropped way down. The one time there was an assault, they had the perpetrator very quickly because he was caught on film, and I think people feel Penn Park as a much safer place to be. And I think that kind of serves it, it can be a very useful tool.
Thank you, Councilwoman Janeska. Commissioner Maudro, would you like to come up and make some comments? I'm sure you have much to add.
Me? I didn't expect or didn't know for certain whether or not I was going to be asked to say anything this evening. I know I'm not part of the presentation, but awesome segue, thank you. Just to answer your question, it is, that ended up being with your help, with you guys' assistance in being allowed to do that and finding the money to actually roll out the project in Penn Park. It ended up being the perfect timing and an awesome case study, if you will. And it's, we looked at, and it's just one of those things that I wanted to have. So I commissioned a snapshot immediately after we got the project done, and you know, I'm looking at, man, I'm struggling right now because I'm looking at Ms. Felicia and being there in the park with you during that homicide that day. It's rough to look at you right now and talk about the park. But immediately when we got the project done up in Penn Park, I went for, I let four months go by because I was trying to control my level of anxiousness, my level of anxiety. I was trying to let some time go by, so I let four months go by. And what I did was, I immediately had our crime analyst, our statistician, go back and pull the data with, so we could, I could give a comparison, or I could have a comparison of the first four months with the cameras versus the last four months without having a camera system in Penn Park. And just again, just to pull it up, because when I was coming here, I actually stopped and pulled up the email from the results that I sent out afterwards. What we looked at, what I had them pull was the violent crime occurrences in Penn Park both four-month chunks. That would include fights, disorderly conducts, robbery, shooting, drug offenses, weapons possessions, rapes, assaults, any shots fired calls, everything that could encapsulate, that could be encapsulated in violent crime that we're seeing in neighborhoods. In that period of four months, we went from the four months without the cameras, there were 28 incidents, to the four months with the cameras, there was only one. It was immediate, didn't take any, like, and the neat part about it, and it's funny, like, looking at you, like, we've always talked, tell people. So it wasn't just the fact that we put the cameras in, it's the fact that we were all transparent about the fact that we put the cameras in and let everybody know, level playing field, hey, this is a safe zone now, the park's covered with cameras. And after we did so, I mean, I think that speaks for itself, going from, I mean, in a four-month period, going from 28 violent occurrences to one. I think that sells itself. And we know that having the camera systems work, again, I look at Ms. Felicia and working in the school district, we learned how to work house poor. I remember the conversations I had with Dr. Holmes. And to protect our schools, we had to figure out how to get a lot done with a little bit. And that's what we did. We knew we didn't have the money for man and woman power to be able to just provide maybe the ratio of staff to students, security staff to students, that we wanted to be able to put on the floors in our buildings. So we got a lot done through technology with those cameras. They were lifesavers. You know, year after year after year, being able to say, Ms. Val, what are you seeing? And being able to respond to that, having her understand the tone of the building and what was our normal, what we wanted to see. And we were always able to stay one step ahead of the occurrences that happened in 101 West College Avenue. So I know utilized well, man, well's going to like this, utilized respectfully, governed with good policy. I'm absolutely certain that a project like this, and we've done a yeoman's job in York, I can't complain. I think we rival Lancaster or anywhere else now with the results that we've pulled off in York. But this is our opportunity to go from good to great. So thank you, guys, for allowing me to say something. That's just off my heart. I begged years ago when I first got here, I said, hey, this is a need, and I'm glad some people listened, some people heard me, and hopefully we get this done.
Thank you, Commissioner Maudro. Is there any public comment regarding this matter this evening? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Gomez, resident, city of York, it's a privilege always to be here. Commissioner Maudro, thank you so much. I want to touch on some of the positive points, but I don't want to spend too much time there because that's not really what we need to work on. That shows the progress we've already made. The fact that they've instituted, at least the policies that they've put forward up to this point, before the system is even deeper into the implementation phases, that is a tremendous, tremendous benefit to us, and it shows what we have here as a community. You can't be overstated that that just doesn't happen. Usually, that's a struggle, that's a fight, it comes later. Is the mic on? I don't know. Can you guys hear me well?
Yes.
Well, in terms of the police department, we have to bring it up because what's the community going to feel and see and perceive? They talk about perception, the perception of crime, perception. A lot of times, it's about what you feel, not about what it is. Let me tell you something, if I point at the camera and I say, who's watching you? They're going to say, the police. Who's they? The common man in the community. That's what they're going to see. They wouldn't be wrong. And you see here, even in the resolution, where it mentions, it's in the very first sentence, we bring up the police department right away. It's going to be seen as an instrument of the state. I do think that is appropriately so. I don't have major issues with the policy except for two critical factors. And it shocks me that I have heard nothing mentioned, either from the body assembled here or from the representatives that have spoken thus far. Artificial intelligence and facial recognition technology. You may think this is hyperbole, but you wouldn't put together a team of officers, benevolent as they may be, equip them and arm them with firearms, and not also give them a proportionate use of force policy. This is what you will be doing if you grant this, and you do not address facial recognition technology most specifically and also artificial intelligence. Of course, there will be some artificial intelligence, it's 2025. That's how you're going to get the masking of the windows, which is, of course, a judicious use of artificial intelligence. But with that, you must have guardrails and systems specifically in place to provide proportional constraints on that type of technology. It shocks me as somebody who, by the way, a lot of council is new, and there's a lot of people in the community. Some of you may know, I've worked on this stuff for literally decades, even here, I volunteer my time, but I'm a technologist by vocation. I don't sit up here with credentials and all of that, just a regular person, is what I say all the time. But you must understand that if you do not have specific constraints within the policy before you approve it, because I don't even see termination clauses here, and I could go on deeper and deeper, but I won't. What's common these days, folks that do it appropriately, is usually organizations, believe it or not, that are private as opposed to government. Government is sort of lacking. You have what's called human in loop. No critical decisions are made without a human in place. They can automate the entire system after you approve this. There's nothing stopping them. Is that something that we would want? What type of technology will they actually be fielding? There should be a public registry, it should be open, it should be conspicuous, we should know. I think that there's more to examine. They've been extremely responsive. I had several discussions early on with some of the representatives that spoke today. The police department themselves, extremely responsive. Here, I've said it many times, you don't have to deal with a project manager, you don't deal with anyone. I rarely bother the commissioner, but if I have a question, I can just phone Captain Lenz, for example. There's great benefits to how we do things, but with this specifically, as it's been presented today, pump the brakes. Again, it may sound like hyperbole. You're handing a gun to a team of officers, no use of force policy is the way that you have to see it. I know of no other way to break this down without dragging you through the weeds from a technical perspective. Number one. Number two, if this were to go forward and it takes effect in perpetuity, you can no longer direct this independent agency. And it's almost humorous to me to say this because we were speaking of policy with regards to the drones, and there was a little bit of hand-waving that took place here where they said, well, listen, we can't tell the police what to do. Well, of course, you can recommend. Well, you also can't tell them what to do. You can place these stipulations, and you can place these contingencies and present it to them, and they're going to take with it and do as they may. But once you approve this, it's done. And I didn't see any termination clauses. I didn't see any mention of what specific technology will be used. I will say, it's a positive here that you have at least some racial impact audits that will be taking place. Those are not independent from my reading of what's been presented, number one. Number two, and I really don't want to get too much deeper into this, but I would like to see things such as, how many times does the police attempt to access or request information garnered by the systems? And what's the final disposition for every request? I want to know what actual standards they're going to abide by when it comes to the implementation of these technologies. There actually are standards that they can abide by. From the White House on down to the National Institutes of Standards and Technologies, we have guidance that we can follow here as a community. We do not have to wing it. But what I can tell you, flat out, if you authorize this without poorly, poorly, poorly held technologies such as facial recognition technologies, not being closely and specifically detailed in terms of their usage and constraints, you're making a drastic, potentially unrecoverable error. Please, let's work together with our stakeholders and the representatives, let's put together something that actually encompasses what this technology will actually shape itself to be in today's time. Please, I beckon you, stop this for now, and let's reconvene. Those are my two cents. You're certainly going to hear more from me as this goes on, I'm sure not just me. I would email you, but sadly, and I probably will, on principle, for the sake of thoroughness, it's not an appeal to a Darbigan. But last time I emailed the body, sadly, we had members of council openly on the record state, say, they stated, we saw the email, we just didn't open it. Well, you suit yourselves, but these ideas, you're going to have to confront them one way or another. I'll make sure of it.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment regarding this matter? Is there a motion to place this on our October 7, 2025 legislative agenda?
I'll move.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Nope. Anyone opposed?
Yes.
Is there one opposition?
Yes.
Yeah, that's one opposition.
Thank you. That moves forward to be placed on our October 7, 2025 legislative agenda. Up next, we have our Public Works Committee, and that is chaired by Councilwoman McInnes.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have a bill amending the fiscal year 2025 budget for Market Street Bridge and Princess Street Center. And we have Ms. Kim Robertson that can speak on that.
Remember your microphone, Kim.
Yeah, it's actually working this time, yeah. Good evening, everyone. This is the first of a couple ordinances coming down that is a combination of some cleanup with our operating budget as it is set up for our ARPA projects, and also some switching of money to different buckets so that we can guarantee that we meet all of our obligations to getting the expenses out the door by the end of 2026. So you kind of have to look at these together to get the whole picture, but for the purposes of how we essentially handle amendments to the budget, they're separated out. So you've got to hang with me as we go through this. First of all, the Market Street Bridge project, the difference of the $48,237 is essentially an administrative fee that the county had, excuse me, YCEA had requested, which was within federal limits in terms of the fact that they are managing the project. So this was something that was agreed upon last year, and the additional amount was just not added to the 25 budget so that it could be paid out. So this is just a correction to get us up to where we had already agreed to and in accordance with the agreement that was actually signed. The next one on here is, we have had $350,000 earmarked for renovations to specifically the Princess Street Center. And ultimately, what it's come down to is that the Princess Street Center needs a lot more than $350,000 in order to get it to a position where it can be usable again. So without being able to gather the additional funds for that, we are afraid that we're not going to be able to actually spend this money out of the ARPA bucket in time. So it has been proposed to back it out of here, and you'll see in later ordinances, we are actually moving it twofold, adding $250,000 to our veterans' housing support bucket that we already have established, and then another $100,000 to Life Path, excuse me, Christian Ministries, which we had given them funds earlier in the process, and they have a need for more. So you don't see that here, this is going to be over where we're adding it to the DECD budget, but here, I'm backing it out. And since these are all funds that we received in previous years, the way it shows up in our budget, that the revenue to support the expenses is the reserve, the carryover fund, so you'll see that I'm backing it out. You don't see a lot of budget amendments when we're taking away expenses. This is the rare occasion, and it's support- This is the rare occasion, and it's supported with the reducing how much is being carried over for the fund balance for previous years.
Thank you. Is there any council comment regarding this or questions?
Go ahead. I do have a question. You may have mentioned that you're pulling it because you don't feel like you have enough time to utilize it from the ARPA fund. How much time do we have left on that?
Well, it depends. For construction-specific projects, money needs to be expended by the end of September 2026. And then the rest of our projects, the money needs to be expended by the end of 2026, so December 31st. And my understanding is that the renovations and the work that needs to be done at the Princess Street Center is nearly four times the amount that we allocated out of ARPA, unfortunately.
Okay, and so my second question is, with us liquidating the $350,000 to move it to...
Is your microphone on?
It is, no, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. My second question is, to move that fund, is there any other funding for that Princess Street Center project?
No. This would eliminate, essentially, empty that bucket altogether.
Okay. That's my only concern, because I know within the community, that's something that when we look at our community centers, it's something that we've been looking at trying to do for a very long time. And then to hear that we're going to liquidate everything out of it, I can see if you say some, but to take it completely down to zero, and then now we're having to start from square zero again to try to figure out how to reopen up a community center. That's my only concern about that, seeing that.
And that's understandable. Keep in mind that this money was specific at the time when we were, we had to come up essentially with a use of the center to support the ARPA funds being used for it that's outside of the revenue replacement funds that we had a little bit more liberty into how we used it, like the roofs and the generators. So for this, this money was specifically earmarked towards getting the building up to the point that we could bring a daycare back into it. So unfortunately, and even though the mayor really wanted to keep at least $50,000 of this to, for new doors or the basic maintenance of it, but that doesn't meet the requirements of what we have originally allocated it for, which was to get it renovated up to be able to actually house a daycare back into it. If we had additional revenue replacement money, which we do not, that is where we could use some of that money in order to essentially, like we did with our other properties, do needed upgrade for security or whatever reasons. But unfortunately, we can't use the money in this bucket just for that purpose. This money was specifically earmarked renovations to be able to get the center back up to being able to, the example we had was to get it in there, but there are several other options that still would have met the requirements for which this money was the expense category that it was allocated in our ARPA plan. So just to add that information, because it was, kind of limits how we can use it without us being able to have the full project in terms of being able to fund the entire renovation that would be needed.
So even, and maybe I don't want to mention that, but I was going to say, I won't add that into it because it's not on the agenda, but I'm thinking about, I am going to say it, because I was thinking about how even, how we're starting the process with Penn Market, how they're doing the roof, they're adding new doors. So we couldn't start anything with this funding pertaining to the Princess Street Center? I'm just asking these questions before we just move funding to make sure that there's no other solution as far as starting the process, being able to start the process. I know we don't have all the funding, but to at least start the process to get it working, you know what I mean? Versus this liquidating, doing away with it, because I know it's something within our community that's been a major concern, and the community wants it. So that's why I'm asking.
And just on my side, in terms of the difference with Penn Street Market is that there is other, I mean, that's a match to a RACP grant. So there is other funding, so we could meet the requirement in terms of us spending our portion of it because the project is already, a project in a hole with funding.
And let me make myself clear on that. The reason why I'm comparing that is because that is a match fund, but even in us not having all the funding for that, we're able to still start the process of, from what we did, what, a month ago, I believe, when we affirmed and moved forward with that process to start with the doors, I believe, the roof and several things. So that's, I'm just, you know, playing devil's advocate.
I understand.
You know, to make sure that we're exhausting all options before we just say, okay, because we don't have the money, let's just do away with it. It's another building in the community that's going to sit, but it's a historical building that should be utilized within our community. That's all I have, I ain't going to prolong it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dennis. Councilwoman Dennis, could you have any comments?
Yeah, mine is just, I think somewhere there's just a copy and paste error, because the fourth whereas, where we're making the shift of the $350,000, also shows up in item number seven under the fourth whereas. And so I want...
Because that's saying where I'm moving the money to, this is that I'm moving it from here. I believe there's a slight difference in the two of them, because I made a point of doing that, that I did copy it, because I was trying to tell the story of that we're moving it from here in order to put it towards those other projects. And I think in the other one, we can double check that I said that we moved it from here for those projects, so we can double check.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dennis. I do have a question. How was the decision made to move the funds from there to the entities, Life Path, Christian Ministries, and the Veteran Housing Support Program?
These were essentially, it's, and to the mayor's credit for this, this is something that he has put off, because we've attempted to see what we could do with the Princess Street Center. So he essentially had received requests from the community in terms of, again, Life Path needing additional funds, from the Prodigy Spectrum Group needing funding, have come to him, and it'd been determined that these are projects that we were looking to fund. I do know the mayor has, for probably six months now, has continuously brought these projects up at elected officials' meetings in terms of us looking to pursue it. Process-wise then is that we reached out to the groups using our ARPA consultants, Essentia, put them in communication, and then started the process in terms of requesting the project description forms, so that Essentia then can review to make sure that those projects would comply with the ARPA requirements if we would then go forth and essentially greenlight using the funds for it. So that essentially was my understanding, is that these groups have come to us through the mayor's office requesting funding, and he has weighed all the options that have come through, including the ones that are coming later down the line here and included, in order to offer these as solutions in terms of how we can redirect our funds so that we can make sure we spend it.
Thank you, and I have one more question. So is the funds for the Life Path Christian Ministries, is that for building as well?
I believe that is for the, I have to look what I put in the other resolution, or the other, I believe it's for operations of the building that they have in place.
And that meets that same requirement for that batch of money for ARPA?
Correct, because it's, we had already given them $100,000 towards their project that was already approved by Essentia. So this is just giving them additional funding because they had proved that they had additional expenses that they could use the funding for.
Thank you, Business Administrator Robertson. Is there any other council comments or questions?
Yes, just briefly, just to add on to what Councilwoman Felicia Dennis said, I, this Princess Street Center money was in Department 420, which is highway.
Public Works.
Public Works. And so, which that budget also covers the Market Street Bridge, I think, and so I don't, I'm looking at Department 400 from the report you gave us last meeting. I mean, there's $8 million left, there appears to be $8 million left in there. And so if we're taking 350 out of the ARPA funds from the highway or Public Works Department, and we're moving it to community and economic development, perhaps, or would there be any money in community and economic development in that big $8 million bucket that isn't obligated or encumbered at this point that could be used for the Princess Street project that everybody, you know, that was originally made and the community likes? And I'm sort of with Felicia on why do we have to completely remove it as opposed to, is there not something else that can be, that's not on the table or not progressing that could stand in for it? Not sure if that's clear, but...
All I can say is that the $8 million in the projects that are already in 400, which is Economic Community Development, just administration, just like 420 is Public Works Administration, are for projects that are in the works. A big hunk of that is, of course, the affordable housing development at 1.5, actually, no, 2.5, and then five, another 500,000 for veteran support. So there's big projects in there, which is why it's totaling big dollar amounts for the department as a whole. But at this point in time, besides what you're going to see coming through where there's a reduction to the first-time homebuyer project, that those projects are accounted for in the works, and we are not concerned that we're not going to meet the obligations for them.
One last, so do you have agreements for all of those? All the agreements are written for them? Because I know our next resolution is to approve for agreements. And so I guess that's what you're saying, there are agreements written for all the $8 million worth of...
Well, the affordable housing and veterans, the agreement isn't written, but the RFP was done and council awarded it to Foursquare. We're just in the process that we don't have the actual agreement, but that is in the work that it's obligated to them, that met the requirements for us to prove obligation at the end of last year. Past that, yes, all the rest of the programs in there, we have agreements for. And even then, I've got $690,000 going out the door within the next week towards the Yoko Fiber project. Like, there's going to be a lot of, the next update on ARPA, there's going to be a lot of money that went out the door out of Economic Community Development, because those projects are all in the works.
Okay, so thank you. I was just, if there weren't agreements, I guess that's the reason you were able to move this money. No agreements were in place, therefore you can move that money. And if agreements are in place for all the other money, that's obligated and not adjustable. Thank you, if that's correct.
I have two more. I have two more questions. I was going to ask one before the other, but I'm going to ask them backwards now that Councilwoman Bupp has spoken about that. You mentioned that we have an updated report coming, right? That's going to show us all numbers. Did I hear that right?
Councilwoman Bupp made reference to the report that I gave at the last council meeting.
Yes, that one.
For ARPA, so yes, there will be regular updates for that, yep.
So, okay, so it's going to be another one that you're going to give us that's going to show where the other 8 million has been allocated, is that?
That was included in the report that I gave you, the details of what projects...
Right, okay. I'm just trying to follow what she was saying. Okay, and so the other concern that I have is, what, and I think I can ask this, if I can't, you'll correct me, what is the urgency to move these funds now? All of a sudden, if we still have it to 2026?
So that we can guarantee that we get the money out the door as soon as possible in case there's any fear that someone might come back and say if we still have it in our bank account, they want it back.
Okay, okay. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dennis.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment regarding this matter? I make a motion to place this on our October 7th, 2025, like I said.
Oh, no, that's for you. Sorry. Okay, I make a motion to move it to our October 7th legislative agenda or our meeting. Is there a motion to remove?
Second.
All right, it's been motioned and seconded. All in favor?
And that will be placed on our October 7th, 2025 legislative agenda. Up next, we have our Economic and Community Development. We have resolutions authorizing various fiscal year 2025 ARPA approved funding agreements. And now I'll hand it over to our business administrator, Kim.
All right, so again, some of this, actually, all...
Before we go on to that, let me turn this on so it doesn't let me... So they made a motion to put that on the 10-7 agenda, the last one. You wanted that on the 10-21 agenda.
No, I need it introduced on the 7th so it can be approved on the 21st, so that these resolutions, because I don't want specifically for the Prodigy Spectrum one that later you'll see where I move money in the bucket so we can actually spend it, is that I don't want these on the 7th agenda, I want it on the 21st, so that those budget amendments are all cleaned up early in the meeting before these are approved. So we're good so far.
The one below, but mine is above.
No problem, Diana.
Okay, so what we're looking at here is four projects, and they come out of, I know I say buckets, but in my mind, these different cost centers, these projects, in my mind, they're buckets that we have money in, that we can pool from, or we move money into, empty it out when we have to spend it. So first of all is the, what was mentioned, the Prodigy Spectrum Management with the additional Veterans Housing Support Funds that in an agenda item coming up, you'll see where we put it into the Economic Community Development Budget so that we can use it. Then the other three projects, the APJ Foundation, the York Community Resource Center, and Christmas Attics, this is funding that would be coming out of the already established bucket for job training for the community, with note that the original agreed amount for that was 400,000, but somewhere in my mind, budget-wise, it ended up in the budget for $1 million, so that's where I'm correcting that in a later agenda item. But there's $400,000 in there, and this ends up covering most of the 400,000. There's one other agreement that is below the threshold to come to council for 25,000 that essentially then would exhaust the 400,000 total. So that is what these are. And process-wise, I've provided council with copies of the project description forms, which is what I had mentioned earlier, is part of the process with our ARPA consultants to review and make sure that the projects actually meet the requirements. When these go on the agenda for the 21st, we will have copies of the actual agreements like we've done before. Like, most recently, we did it for the reprogram program out of the police department, same thing, we presented the agreement to you, you'll have a copy of the agreement and a copy of the project description form that'll be part of the agenda item. But those agreements are in the works between we getting the information back from and center that we need and utilizing the help of Solicitor Flowers to write the agreement. We anticipate we're going to have them all in place for the deadline for the agenda for the 21st, but we didn't want to miss the opportunity to come and discuss today so that we can get it on the agenda.
Thank you, Business Administrator Robertson. I believe we do have representatives from each of these entities here with us today. I guess I'll start first with Prodigy Spectrum Management Plus.
Good evening, ladies. My name is Lavelle Howe. I'm the founder of Prodigy Spectrum. And if I can start, Prodigy Spectrum Management, what we do, we house homeless and displaced veterans. When we originally started, we started with a small facility at 656 Salem Avenue, and within a year, we had to expand. I had no clue that what we was going to face with our homeless veterans. But one of the things that I've seen in what I do now, we offer them three meals a day plus snacks, activities, activities anywhere from horse therapy to yoga. Activities anywhere from horse therapy to yoga, all these things that our veterans now see. But one of the things that I seen us face was not just housing, housing wasn't a solution. We had to get to the source of the problem. The source of the problem was even some of our veterans that received income, they wasn't getting medication management. They was getting thrown out of their place because they had pest infestation. It was hoarders or again, not going to their appointments and different things like that. This building will allow me to continue my services that I provide right now. We are at 626 West Market Street. The building is located right next to us. The difference in how we will establish success with our veterans is we're going to continue our services while they live independently. We'll go over once a week, we'll make sure the apartments are clean. We'll make sure that they are eating properly, they're going to all their appointments. They're taking their medication, which is a big one. That's something that they don't have in any other program. Some of our veterans leave our program and go to something called Hubbadge, which the government helps them assist in paying their rent. The problem is they go right back to what got them in, where they're at now. They'll still have the services. A prime example, we was here last month, we thought we was on the agenda, but we wasn't. And one of our veterans spoke, one of our veterans that spoke, it was another veterans with him. He left our program, he got apartment. And when he got his apartment, he has apartment down in Dallas Town now, a beautiful apartment. And this was a grown man that came into my office and he was crying. And he was saying, I'm so afraid to leave. You can't imagine what I'm going through right now. And I told him, I know exactly what you're going through, but we're going to be here, we only phone call away. He was like, it's not the same. This was a totally different gentleman that came into our program. And when he was crying, I understood. Prodigy Spectrum is more than just a place to house your family. And anyone that ever came into our facility or talked to our veterans, they know we are family. So it's hard to separate your family. Now we'll be right next door. So even the veterans that do have family, at some point, even when it came from the military, they lost connection with their family. Prodigy is a family where they can go to, they don't feel afraid if they feel suicidal. Or they don't feel afraid to say, I don't have anybody to have dinner with tonight. Or I have a problem, I need to talk to someone. Or I can't manage my medication. Some of our veterans are, and I know this sounds weird, take 30 pills a day. That is so hard for anyone, even someone that don't have some of the issues that our veterans have, much medication. Where we can go over, we know that they did take their medicine. They have a hot meal. We don't have to worry about them feeling suicidal. Or if they do, we're right next door, we can be able to assist them with anything. So that's the reason for this project.
Thank you. Is there any comments or questions?
Quickly, though, just logistically, the residents stay in a property you already have? And then two properties and then you're getting another property where you're going to have your offices? Or is that?
Well, we have an office, right now we are a personal care home. We're located in York City and West York. That was the last building, we at 1811 West Market Street. And our residents reside with us, they can reside with us up to two years. All of our veterans are veterans, they come directly off a waiting list at the Department of Veterans Affairs. So we know the veterans that are in need of that, but they can stay with us up to two years. Some leave because they need a high level of care, they may go in a state VA hospital. And then others are able, we get them well enough where they can live independently. The problem that I was seeing was something, and it's a bad term, that we call frequent flyers. People that come back or they back on the street. You see somebody that they're back, right, but they're back on the street. One of the things, I'm a solutionist, so I just didn't want to be a Band-Aid. I wanted to heal the wound. And one of the ways of healing a wound is to be able to find a solution while they're back out there in the first place. To give you an example of how I healed the wound, a lot of our veterans were leaving York County when they go to the Department of Veterans Affairs, because it wasn't a place besides a shelter for them to go to. We're not a shelter, we are an actual home for the veterans.
So early on, when you first spoke, I heard you say you would go over once a week?
Yes.
And that's where I was concerned about how they're getting their medication every day? Do you have somebody that's there every day or?
No, 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 the ones that are level enough to live independently, we'll go over and we'll manage it. But we only need to manage it like once a week instead of every day. So we'll plan a planner for those seven days. When we go back in after those seven days, we'll go in and do the checklist of everything I said. The medication management, to make sure they have their meals, making sure they go to their appointments, making sure they have their refills, making sure the apartments are clean. Making sure they're not bringing other people in or being abused. A lot of our veterans have people that only come around when they get their monthly income. So we want to eliminate all of this process and we'll be able to do that while still giving them their dignity and respect. They're living on their own, but they got the support right next door.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Thank you. Up next, we have APJ Foundation.
My founder, APJ Foundation, also.
What's your name?
Oh, excuse me, sorry about that. Abdul Jamison, resident, born and raised here with. Abdul Jamison, yeah, born and raised here, live in the city. Also, yeah, went to all the levels of school, York High and all, Agent Paul Smith, walked through the snow and all that type of stuff. The hills, you know, everybody knows that, from York. We didn't have buses. They got conveniency now, you know, but anyways, but yeah, so, but yeah, born and raised here. Business owner, been a business owner since two, I want to say two, I've probably been in business all my life. My father had a corner store, our Parkway area, Persian Avenue, they just named the street after him. So yeah, we just been in business for pretty much all my life, understand it. Also understand, been in prison before myself, you know, been through the whole system. In 2020, I lost my son to gun violence on King Street, got shot, drive by and lost his life. So I started the APJ Foundation in honor of him. And what we do, we focus on inner city youth, at risk youth, understanding. I watched him, I watched these youth that, you know, from, from, whether it's from Parkway, South Side. And it became more of a territorial thing and you see the mindset of them and how it changed. Because it was very, very different when I was growing up. It was like, you know, you have a fistfight, it was over with. Now the kids are using the guns and things like that, using that as a tool or, you know, a source to resolve their problem. A lot of it has to do with, you know, from my perspective is, you know, the social media, video games, everything. But, you know, we always talk about the problem and, you know, just like when they was talking about the cameras, I mean, that's a form of a deterrent, but the mindset is, was so important right now. A lot of us have a, the mindset of the youth is to, you know, they don't, they don't know, they have an identity crisis and they don't love them. Coming from one parent home, I'm pretty sure like 90% of the young men that go to prison, you know, they're coming from a single parent home, mom usually working, father, you know, me separated, you know, you know, broken family, things like that, especially in the inner city, we see it so much. So where APJ Foundation, we focus on is developing skills. Economics is always key to everything. We just talk about money, budget, everything. Kids want money, kids, bottom line, I come from both sides. I understand it, I've lived it. And what, what I see the most in the lack of with the youth is that they don't have skills. So people, they want to do good, but how do they do good? So so much trades and things like that have been taken out of the inner city and now that. But we don't even know economics, to understand the budget and money. I watch older folks that are horrible with their money, so even the kids are going to be horrible with their money. So for me is building an environment, which I did build, excuse me, built an environment for them to have skills and trades. But now I also know how to manage their money, managing their emotions and dealing with the mental health part of what they're dealing with as well. So that's what we do at our facility. And coming from the city, you know, I love the city, I love, I love where I'm born and raised from. I love these young men, you know, they just need more opportunity. And that's where we provide that skill, so we focus on welding, trades that, that focus on where they can earn real money. And they're living for their families and loved ones. A lot of times for me, like having different mechanics in my business, things like that. I have a, I sell cars and that's another thing I do, I sell cars. I have an auto mechanic shop, I have the only mobile tire service in the city. I go around, we change tires, I was out here probably several times and, and. Tires and things like that, but it's very, very, it's very rewarding. And then I send young kids out there that have their driver's license to be able to do that as well. Teach them how, you know, to serve the community first and foremost, besides picking up, you know, gun or drugs and hustling and things like that. So with APJ, we truly, truly trying to focus on the problem. We're not going to win them all. I'm not here saying I'm this great savior, everybody got an idea, you know, I mean, you just implement it, we go with it, you know? But the key thing is, you know, is to move with it and not just stagnate. Just like I was just, she was talking about the whole thing with the purchase street center. Something has to get done, you know, something like that, I've seen it, it's a sore eye. Get it done, make it happen, you know, because you need those resources, no matter how many it is to, you know, where, where, where our youth can go there and have opportunity to bring change, you know, just save one at a time. But back to where I'm at with APJ, you know, like losing my only son, trying to find that purpose and meaning. And my meaning was to build an environment, which we, you know, afford, we have our trade school in place where we'll be a full academy to be able to get certified and everything for that. We still, we worked with Career Link last year, so we had over 20 something kids and rotating them. We want to have financial literacy classes, then we have the hands-on training, then they had. So we was hitting them from all, and then we had kids from Christmas Addicts as well. But it's, it's an ongoing thing and then right now, you know, you see so much with the funding when it comes to the state. People are, you know, dealing with that as well, not having the funding that's being, that they need. For me, you know, being a business owner, I put my son's life insurance policy into my foundation. That's how it started, so I'm pretty, I can, I can do it with, you know, I can do only so much by myself. But, you know, with this, with things that we do have with grants and that come through, it does help. I can't do, I can't do it all, you know, I mean, I would love to, trust me, I wouldn't even be here, you know, I mean, I wouldn't even. I'm the type of man that, you know, that I do for self and I built my own way in life, you know, I mean. And that's the one thing that I'm focusing on, focusing on these young men, is giving them skills and get building, for them to build a mental capacity, so they can learn how to not just turn to the streets, but turn to a trade and bring value to the marketplace. But they need these skills, I guess, and then they need to understand how to build a good temperament, to control their anger, not to be emotional. So we're, we got mentors that we work with them as well. Sometime even, you know, even with, on the business side, the kids that's there, even customers that come through, the customers mentor the kids, they, they see them with the trainees and they, and they tell them, you know, to keep pushing forward. So it's a lot of, lot of moving components with, so, but that's what APJ is all about. And, you know, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, thank you. Is there any other, is there any council comments?
Just briefly, I've followed you for a few years. I remember your organization was on Give Local York.
Yeah.
So you were taking donations through that. I think this sounds great, they need role models, you sound like, I thank you for what you're doing and giving back and I wish we could have given sooner, but here we are and, and so, thank you, you've got a good team. I recognize names here, so.
I appreciate my team, one of my team members here. Yeah, it's, I'm the type of person, I've been, I've been told my board, I said, we don't need money, don't go after it. I'm, I'm really big on that, because if somebody else really needs it, let them have it, you know? I'll find a way and I'm really big on it, because I'm very, I'm, I'm a good businessman, so. And, you know, I mean, but at the same time, you know, when we do need things and we do need to help these young men, you know, I mean, and young women, you know, we got, you know, we do reach out. And I appreciate everything you do too, you know, I mean, to help everyone that's here, you know, I mean, you know, continue to do what you do and be great, stay vertical, appreciate it.
So you have one more comment?
Yes.
I just have some more comments.
I also want to just say thanks for what you're doing in honor of your son for APJ. And I've been following it, you know that. And you're helping to change the lives of other young people. And like you said, you're giving them skills, you're giving them, you're giving them something that, you know, they might not have been able to get if they didn't have APJ.
And the tough love.
And the tough love is good and, and just like you said, you know, you, you come from both sides. So you have, you have that experience to be able to reach them where some others may not be able to, because they haven't been on both sides. So keep up the good work and your city is behind you, is what I'm saying.
I appreciate that, I appreciate you all, thank you.
Is there any other comments or questions?
I will share that, Mr. Jamison shared, I do serve on the board of APJ Foundation, great organization. You know, the unfortunate loss of his son, but it's great to see what he has turned that into for our community. And it's great to see the young men and women, we have some young women that have went through the program. But it's great to see them understand and receive the skill set and be able to give back to our community, even as he mentioned, sometimes the young men are able to go out and do the mobile tire service on their own and able to have the opportunity to say, if you, if he can do it, I can do it too. And not only that, but also the mental health resources within the program. Also the physical health resources, but also the opportunity to have real world, hands-on experience and the opportunity to just have that face-to-face with them and then the opportunity to even speak with them and see them and see them enjoying the work. I know some days they grumble, but it is, it is great to see that, like she said, that tough love and to see the work together with our young people in the community, to shift them and turn them from violence, to say that there is an opportunity for you in this community. Not all of our students want to go to college. And we know that the debt with college that comes from that sometimes. And some of them want to go into trades and don't have the opportunity or don't know where to go. And so I just wanted to speak on that behalf, a wonderful organization and I'm honored to serve with that organization.
And real quick, and I know your information is out there, but we're, we're streaming live, so there might be somebody that, that don't have Facebook and things like that, that you can put out the age range, how they can contact you to be able to get into the program or?
Our age range right now is 16 to 20, we at 16 to 21? And but we're actually trying to change things, because what I, what I want to focus on with young men too and young women is to become homeowners early on too, so I'm working on that as well. These are how, you know, two years after, I think I was, I bought my first house when I was 25 years old. So, you know, I mean, I went to FHA and a lot of people don't know about it, they don't even know about the credit. That's another thing we're working on too. There's so many things we work on, but credit, that's, because when someone starts to own things and they start to have, they have more of a, I could say, more value in stake in it. So my thing is for the inner city youth to start buying real estate and buying a property. So my thing is for the inner city youth to start buying real estate and buying a property, not just talking about, I'll have a, this is my block. No, you buy the block and then I'm gonna teach you tools, how to do it. And that's what we wanna do. Because then they have more sense of a worth in it and they have something for their family. And they're not just paying rent and just paying and letting somebody else, you know, benefit off of them throughout the years. Because you figure if they're, they're in their twenties, by the time they're, you know, you get a fifteen-year mortgage, by the time they're thirty, it, you know, they, the houses before you get, the house is theirs, it's paid for. So we, we just wanna teach that so much because I think that, that can bring value, it could bring so much value to this community within itself. And then uplift the community as a whole.
Your contact information.
Oh, so, oh, yeah, apj, um, foundation.org. And, um, yeah, we're located at three-twenty South Richmond Avenue. Um, and also, um, yeah, and my business is, um, um, S and O, S and O, S and O Auto Sales Tire Service. And the world moves on tires. So, you know, I mean, but that's, like I said, I'm a business owner too as well. So, I appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Up next, we have York Community Resource Center.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Allison Frost. I am the executive director of the York Community Resource Center, also known as Tech Central York. Um, this project and this funding would allow for the expansion of, uh, Tech Central York into our trades program. Right now, we are currently operating at eight hundred East Market Street. Um, that was a former M and T bank branch located at Sherman in East Market that was donated to the organization in twenty-twenty-two. And also what's so significant about that is we took what would have been a four, potentially blighted building when M and T, um, was no longer offering services. And we were able to transform that building into a bilingual workforce development center. And that is much of what, uh, Tech Central York is. We are a bilingual wo- uh, workforce development center, offering adult basic education, which includes English as a second language. Um, we are currently running those classes. We graduated so far two cohorts, which comprised of about a hundred students per cohort. Um, we are working on getting our GED, High School Equivalency Program up and running. And what will make us unique in that is we will offer it in not only English, but in Spanish as well. Um, and then as part of our job training, uh, and our goal really with our job training is to ensure that we are training people for careers in demand. Ensuring that those that are seeking training are earning a livable wage and a full-time wage. Going from potentially part-time temporary employment to full-time employment and all the benefits that are associated with full-time employment. Currently at our eight hundred East Market Street building, we're running our allied health courses, which consist of CNA classes, medical assistant and phlebotomy. Uh, thus far, we've graduated, proud to say, two cohorts of CNA classes, which are about ten students apiece. Our first medical assistant class, which was a twenty-week long course. Uh, we started with twelve students, ended with twelve students and all twelve students graduated. Um, and our phlebotomy, we were able to graduate our first phlebotomy cohort, uh, early this summer. And we do have an evening co- course running. We have several more CNA courses going on. Um, and we plan to run these courses, uh, well through into twenty-twenty-six. Um, what I can accredit to our success, it's not just job training. There's also that social service aspect. We have what's called a career navigator. So she not only recruits for our programs, but she walks alongside our students. We take a very holistic approach to what we're doing. So we train adults. So when you are training adults, you are training those with adult lives and things that come along with being an adult, which include taking care of families, working full-time and then trying to be trained as well. So making sure that we are working with individuals to help them mitigate any barriers they might face. And I would say that is a key component, component that makes this, uh, highly successful. So the third part of the Tech Central model is the trades. Um, and that is what we're looking to do is expand our, into our, uh, second facility. Um, we do not have the space or the capacity in our current facility. Our current facility is only about thirteen thousand square foot facility. And we need much more space in order to, um, pretty much do what we're trying to do. And our trades would comprise of facility maintenance. So that's general construction, electrical, carpentry, um, commercial and industrial HVAC, plumbing and electrical. We do have intentions of, uh, also having a, uh, welding program as well. And again, focused on full-time careers. We do intend to use educational partners, just as we do at this moment. Uh, for our allied health, we do have our educational partner of Hack. Hack, uh, helps us with the instructors and the curriculum. And we would use an educational partner for our, uh, trades as well. Um, so, yeah, that's pretty much, uh, Tech Central York and allowing this, um, you know, we know that trades, training, it's, it's in demand. The, that we have a shortage of tradesmen in all of these fields. Um, and it's much needed. Um, I will also say that, and I always try to reiterate this, that Tech Central York, while we are bilingual, it is for everybody. Everybody is welcome there and everybody should be taking advantage of our programming. And I always want to put that message out there because those that walk, anyone that walks through our doors are welcome. Um, so that is my pretty quick spiel about Tech Central York and its importance. And I'll open it up to any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. And thank you, um, for having Tech Central here in our community. I know some of us, we went to the ribbon cutting. But I'm willing to even hear from some students that have graduated.
That's wonderful.
Yes, and you know, even them share how successful the program has been for them. But even some of your team even walking them through after. Grad, after graduation to make sure that although they have graduated, that you didn't drop the ball there. That if they needed further assistance, they're able to still go back and get that assistance to secure employment. Or even if it's, I need help to figure out childcare. I need help to figure this or whatever. It isn't like you're done. And we're done with you. Uh, and so I've talked to a few residents, uh, residents who have participated, have graduated. And, you know, was just sharing a lot of information with me. Um, so I just wanna say thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Washington. And that's correct. And I'm glad you brought that point up is even after individuals do graduate, we do work with them for at least twelve months after. So we, uh, touch base with them, make sure that they are, um, you know, even though they've just been employed, they're keeping their employment. If they have any issues keeping that, whether it's childcare, transportation, how do we help you with those, uh, barriers? And that's also, it's not done just because we've trained you. Uh, the real work, uh, actually in keeping that job and keeping all of that up, um, comes thereafter. And we also have a community navigator and that's another key point is our community navigator, while we're training you, again, we're training adults with adult lives and adult things going on. And she works to find resources and ensure that if you do have other issues, that we can find those resources for you so that that's not a reason why you can't complete training.
Thank you. So do you have any other council comments or questions?
Well, I just wanna say, you know, there were several of us were there. Many of us were there for the groundbreaking, we're gonna be there for the ribbon cutting. And the day of the ribbon cutting, there were classes in session that we got, see some CNA classes. Um, just quietly observed them and see what was going on. We are very impressed with you. Very impressive.
I was there for the refreshment.
Although I miss the ribbon cutting because I do work full-time, all the time. So, right, I, I do, uh, support um, the program that you have and I, I really love everything that you're talking about. And not only, um, excluding it, but making it exclusive to everyone. And so that's a good thing. Um, so I'm interested in more information because I'm right up the street from you. I'm at eight hundred East King Street and you're at Market. So maybe there's some things that we can kinda collab to do. Um, and I'm not talking as council, I'm talking as pastor at this point. Um, and, and be able to push that program for those that might not really know what it is. Um, because I was driving by with a few people in my car the other day and they were asking, I was telling them what it was. And so they were excited about that. Uh, and so keep up the great work and keep making impact in our community. Um, it's a lot of information that we're getting tonight that we already have. Um, but it's good that it is being recorded once again and others can hear it. Right? Uh, so that they know too. So keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A quick question, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I was thinking you need a space for this and I saw the address on here is one oh one to one twenty-one West Market Street. I wonder if you own that building now or if it's under option because it sounds like this, um, that you're doing pre, pre-construction costs and such. So I didn't know if you actually own it, have title to it or that's in the works and.
No, that's a good question. So, um, we were looking at that facility. Unfortunately, that facility did not, uh, work out. So we do have another, uh, facility that we are working to, uh, take title to, but it is within, uh, city bounds. Um, also the facility that we are looking to, um, occupy one key component to it and was part of the decision. It is in a distressed neighborhood. So that's also a key thing to, um, mention. When we set up Tech Centros, not just here in York, because we are one of seven centers throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. There are two in Lancaster, one in Lebanon, one in Harrisburg, Reading, and now one in the city of Philadelphia. Um, we aim to place our facilities in neighborhoods of need. Um, and making sure that the community has access to the resources. Meaning we're in walking distance to the neighborhood. Um, we are along bus lines, things of that nature. So, uh, we are looking at a different faci- facility, which happens to be on, uh, West King Street. Um, and that is over closer to the west end of town that we will, uh, we're looking to occupy. But we still, with that being said, uh, do need it, uh, we, we renovations. And we still need the funding for those pre-construction costs.
Yep. And then if that West King Street doesn't work out, there might be something on Princess Street.
Maybe.
Two. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other council comment or questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And last but certainly not least, we have Christmas addicts. I don't believe anyone's here. I don't know if.
If there's not, I can speak towards it.
Thank you so much.
So this is so much of what we talked about Life Path, but we had already, um, given them money down the line. The Christmas addicts specifically for their career focus institute. Uh, if we had given them a hundred thousand dollars, um, a year or so ago. But as you can see in the project description form here, they need, uh, for operation, operating cost. They actually requested for three hundred and forty-nine thousand originally. So initially we were, you know, trying to figure out how we're building these budgets. Uh, we, uh, held off, but now that we specifically have the money for the job training, we're like, let's give them another hundred thousand from that. So just real quick, it does say that, um, originally the request, um, was to expand their job program, uh, to include the Christmas Addicts Career Focus Institute. Uh, the goal of the institute is to give talented but underprivileged youth and young adults the skills training and mentorship to become the next generation of engineers, managers, architects and cybersecurity analysts. Uh, they verify and enroll eligible York City residents in, uh, for the following programs. The Corridor, Summer Enrichment Program, Management Training and Development Program, Planning and Design Program and the Cybersecurity Program. So this would be additional funds for operating costs for that, for those, the overall institute that, that, uh, offers those programs.
Thank you, Business Administrator Robertson. Is there any, uh, questions or comments, uh, for her regarding this? Is there any comments or questions from the public regarding, um, each of these entities? Yes, sir.
Manuel Gomez, I feel like it's not done enough, but this is the type of stuff that we need more of, of course. Probably all wish we had endless amounts of funds to disperse this way, but fortunately we don't. But this is where crime prevention happens. This is how you reduce crime. That type of strategic and focused community development, economic development is really how you're going to reach into the community, change things. I disagree with Mr. Jameson. He said he's not a savior, but that's what your saviors are. Your saviors walk the community. They're just regular people. They do things that often go unseen, but this is how change happens. Uh, I love to see all of the different people that are getting funds here. Some of them, we've watched them grow, literally, as time goes on and they come in. And what's interesting to me is it's almost just, you're looking at both ends of the rope. Pardon me. I also wake up at three in the morning and it's a long day. Hey, you know, if I was in a day, that's how you gotta do it sometimes. Um, so I'm a bit hoarse, forgive me. It's, you're sort of looking at both ends of the spectrum because the fact that there's so much demand is why these programs continue to expand. It's a good thing, but of course, it's also another way to see it that there's just a tremendous amount of need. But it does not go unnoticed and it's, uh, all to a tremendous benefit to the community. I'm glad we could do this. And just had to get up and say it. We don't always touch on the positive aspects of what comes through these chambers.
Thank you. Is there any other comment, council comment?
I do have a comment. And it's, it's, because I stepped out for a second and I felt like I spoke to everybody but to the veterans, housing, um, support. And so I, I think with, with you, what you guys are doing for our veterans is, is an awesome um, opportunity for them. And, um, I, I say that it, it's, it's much needed. You know, they go out, they serve our country, they come back and some, a lot of them, uh, feel, uh, uncared for, you know? And so I just wanted to, because I came in the tail end, so I didn't get to say anything. But I did wanna say to, um, the Veterans Housing, um, Support Program, am I saying that right or am I looking right? Okay, there we go. Okay. Prodigy'spect, right? Um, to, to your program, um, to keep up the good work. I remember you came some time ago. And so I do remember faces. So I just wanted to say, uh, keep up the good work and, and we thank you for, um, helping and supporting our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you for doing the work.
Yes.
Being where there was a need.
And filling it. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, I make a motion to place this on the October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five legislative agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, that'll be placed on our October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five legislative agenda. Moving along, we have an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget in health for five thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars and thirty-six cents for STD testing and outreach.
I will hand that over to Business Administrator Robertson. I don't see anyone from the Health Bureau.
No, um, I believe, um, in terms of, uh, what has been coming through the Health Department recently is that this is just updating their operating budget for the rest of the year, uh, to identify, um, additional funding that is available for this program. So we need to update our operating budget in order to match the grant budget.
In order to match the grant, what?
Uh, to make our operating budget match their grant budget so they can actually expend the funds and get reimbursed for it.
Thank you. Is there any council comment regarding this? Any public comment? Is there a motion to place this on our October seventh, twenty-twenty-five legislative agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Anyone opposed? That moves forward and that will be placed on our October seventh, twenty-twenty-five legislative agenda. Up next, we have an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget for our, uh, D, Department of Economic and Community Development for Budget Corrections and Life Path Funding. I will hand this over to Business Administrator Robertson.
Yep, this is the other piece of the puzzle, uh, in terms of, um, updating our ARPA, uh, operating budgets to reflect, um, the project budgets. Uh, in this one specifically, uh, there's a couple pieces that all fall under Economic Community Development's, uh, Department four hundred. Uh, specifically is what I mentioned before, is that I'm correcting the amount for the job training to be four hundred thousand instead of a hundred thousand. And I just wanna say that as much as we'd love to make the, or it's not a hundred thousand, excuse me, a million. As long as we, as much as we'd love to be able to help more organizations or help these organizations, we do not actually have the additional six hundred thousand dollars that's in our operating budget available as part of our, our ARPA grant budget. So this is just correcting it. So I just wanna make sure that that's understood, um, in, in terms of why there's a reduction there. Uh, past that is, uh, adding the hundred thousand dollars for the Life Path Christian Ministries. Um, an additional amendment to their, uh, agreement, uh, will come through, um, council next month for that. But I wanted to make sure that the money is put in their bucket for that. Uh, and this is the same, uh, essentially project number that was used before for them. And then, uh, another correction was, uh, the delinquent tax program, the cost center for that, the four ninety-one. We had exhausted that the same way we were looking to like move out, uh, the money out of their budget to other budgets last year's. And it was an error that it was put back in this budget in lieu of the four ninety-two cost center for first-time home buyers. in lieu of the 492 Cost Center for First Time Homebuyers. So it's a correction to reduce the $500,000 to zero. And then for the First Time Homebuyer Program, originally $500,000 was awarded to that several years ago. But now that we do have an agreement that we utilize tenfold to help get applicants in place for this program. Again, looking at timeline in terms of what we have been able to actually issue out and the applicants that are in rotation, that we're looking to reduce that to a total of $275,000 for the program. But they have already, we've already issued some of that money out in previous years. So for this year, all we need left is for, it's $246,977. And lastly is the additional $250,000 towards Veterans Housing Support for the Prodigy Spectrum Agreement. So again, just a little bit of housekeeping, a little bit of moving things around, again, under the heading of, let's get this money out.
Thank you. Is there any council comment regarding this?
I have a question, and I might be off here. So in the ARPA report you gave for August 31st, and it says the annual revised budget, but this is the account, the expense account. So I don't know if that matches. So for 400, Department 400, you've got the budget at $8,817,747? And on this ordinance, it says that the revenue approved or the carryover is 8,788. So it's off by like $29,000. So I don't know if that, what that is, what that difference is.
I'd have to look into it. I'm not sure.
That's fine.
I do know that when I pulled the number out for this specific, when I drafted this ordinance, I did reference the Open Gov Financial System in terms of seeing what the amount is currently in the budget for that line. So I will have to look at the difference between what that line is as opposed to adding all the expenses together that was in the report. So I can look into it then. But I'm confident that this is what's in the operating budget at the moment.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions from council?
No.
Any comments or questions from the public? I make a motion to place this on our October 7th, 2025 Legislative Agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That moves forward to be placed on our October 7th, 2025 Legislative Agenda. We're moving along to police. We have a resolution, resolation, resolution, appointing probationary police officers. I will hand that over to Business Administrator Robertson, because I see we just have Officer X.
See, Solicitor Flowers, you thought they were going to get tired of you. So what this is, is as comes up about twice a year, is that Academy is held for probationary police officers. And we have one coming up. And what we're looking at is we're in that interesting time point in terms of there are vacancies within the department, but we do have eight positions that are currently funded by ARPA funds that we, the original plan was not to extend that funding into 2026. So we're in that point where, again, we're looking at what money is left over and if we're going to be able to fund any of those positions for next year. But I don't want to go ahead and backfill those positions if we're not going to have funding. So the request here is just that, to give us until the deadline for the agenda for October 7th, to clarify the number of vacancies we have that we want to extend offers to in order to guarantee that we're not going to have to lay anybody off. So that's the, the idea behind the X is that we're still clarifying the actual, the number. There are vacancies, but we need to make sure that we're not bringing in officers that we're not going to actually have funding for, for the new year. So again, placeholder in terms of the way the committee works and making sure that timing wise, we would need to have the resolution approved at the October 7th meeting in order to continue the process so that we can meet the Academy start times.
Thank you, Business Administrator Robertson. Yeah, that was my question, how many officers? And what was the X standing for? Do we have any other council comment or question?
No.
No. I was just concerned about the X too, but you answered it.
Do we have any public comment or questions regarding this matter?
Yes, sir.
I've long developed a complex making that walk back and forth here with nobody else in the room. Manuel Gomez.
You need to sit closer.
Let me tell you, my one question is, I don't know if it's a practice or if it's a pattern, but we would, I guess I should say be more transparent with it. We'd see the list before, we'd see them, even the prospective candidates before they were even selected. Of course, I would say the more sunshine, the better. Just see things trending a little bit in the opposite direction. Just something to throw out there. Because I know we don't have an Officer X, of course. Or any Officer Xs.
Thank you. Any other public comment regarding this matter? Is there a motion to place this on our October 7th, 2025 Legislative Agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That moves forward to be placed on our October 7th, 2025 Legislative Agenda. Up next, we have a resolution authorizing a budget transfer in the amount of $165,532. I will hand it over to Business Administrator Robertson.
I did a lot of ARPA work. I was pulling my hair out. But so this is another cleanup. At the very end of 2025, we were able to hire in-house one trauma responder and two credible messengers, which originally we were going back and forth. These are programs within the Police Department that are ARPA funded that have been approved for multiple years. We had made several attempts to essentially have it under other contractual services. We were looking to partner with an organization that would provide these individuals to us for this purpose. And we were unable to do that. So at the end of last year, we're like, all right, let's bring them in, in-house and make them city employees. At that point, the budget was already approved and the money was in there as other contractual services. So this actually updates the budget so that there's the correct budget for salaries, overtime, and FICA, and then reducing the other contractual service budget that's available for both these programs.
Thank you. Is there any council comment regarding this?
None.
Yep, quickly, the other contractual services, you do show that you have some expenses, so approved and amended and a variant. So did you use that budget line item, the other contractual services for some expenses this?
What you're seeing here is the original budget for the year, say for 424 Cost Center is $184,000. I'm removing $69,174 from there in order to fund the salaries, overtime, and FICA line above.
And how will you use the balance? Or do you plan to use the balance?
Yes. At this point, the balance is still planned. I'd have to refer to what was part of the original project, but it's supporting essentially, again, the look to get other partners in order to support the programs for the trauma response and the credible messenger.
Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Is there any other council comment or questions? Is there any public comment or questions regarding this? I make a motion to place this on our October 7th, 2025 Legislative Agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That moves forward to be placed on our October 7th, 25 Legislative Agenda. Up next, we have our rules and administrative code, and I will hand it over to our chair, Councilwoman Buck.
Okay. I'm introducing an ordinance. First item on the agenda, well, I'm introducing an ordinance to amend Article 951, the Municipal Solid Waste Management Act. And it's adding point 16 to Article 951. I've had some correspondence with the Solicitor about possibly making some changes to how this is written.
So I'm happy to give an explanation of this if you'd like. So Section 951.16, minimum charges and vacancy credits exists. It's on the books now. We're not adding it. What we're doing or what the proposal is for the, so the ordinance requires that every dwelling unit have a contract for refuse service with the contractor that the city has selected. There is an opt-out on the current, under the current ordinance for 50 units. So you know, if you've got an apartment building with 50 units, you don't have to worry about finding somewhere for 100 toters for recycling trash for the entire thing. So the ordinance currently allows 50. That has become unreasonable with the city just space-wise. You know, there's no room even on these smaller units, smaller unit buildings to just place toters. So the city is currently allowing 14-unit complexes to opt-out. And so they'll get their own dumpster. And so that's all this is doing, is reducing that number, the opt-out number from 50 to 14. There is, so as part of, if you want to opt-out, you have to work with finance and refuse, provide the contract so we know that you're actually getting trash service and not just, you know, dumping it somewhere you're not supposed to. And so the underlined language in here is added. That is proposed new language.
Right. And I think I was saying that we could just change the 50 to 14 where it exists in the article now and that we didn't need, didn't need the extra sentence.
So when I was responding to you specifically, your question was about whether or not the application had to be turned. You know, if we want to add, the application will be reviewed and responded to by the city within a certain date. I was saying I didn't, I wouldn't recommend that going in there. But I, you know, I do support the one, the underlined language in here as this is, provides the city a little bit of backup. When somebody comes in and says, I'm opting out and I'm not handing you a contract. You know, I don't have to. I'm not giving you anything. So there are some things that can be done by regulation, like the city will review the application and get back to you. I don't prefer to have the city's obligation put into the ordinance, you know, requiring that the city turn something around in a certain period. But I do like to put the requirements for property owners in the ordinance so everybody's on the same page, knows what they need to provide in order to be approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other council comment?
None.
Any public comment? Yes, sir.
Manuel Gomez, this is good. One of the things I hear often from business owners, never make it to council. But I hear a lot of feedback from them is, and property owners, a lot of times, those are interchangeable. You have business owners, they have a stake in the community, they have properties. One thing is impacting another and it's a domino effect. This type of flexibility, we need more of it. We honestly need more of it. When I first saw it on the agenda, I thought it was going to be one other thing, a different type of flexibility. This is fine. This is wonderful. But this is the type of thing that we need more of, where it can happen. Have that flexibility because it can make a big difference for people. It's not just aesthetics. And I don't know if this is also because we have other development projects that are coming in, these so-called smaller buildings, but with higher densities. Either way, to think flexibly, please. Just try to maintain a little bit more of that disposition.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I do actually, I need to, I need to say that Section 6 does talk about the 50 units of the ordinance. So we're going to have to change that too, because that references 50. C. And maybe we can move this forward and make those changes in the next meeting if that's.
So are you, I'm looking at 916A, there's a minimum.
C talks about opt-out properties shall be required to pay a minimum fee per housing or commercial unit up to a maximum of 50 and are not eligible to receive any curbside collections. And then D, any residential apartment complex with 50 or more housing units or commercial establishments that opt-out shall be responsible for payment, et cetera. So it just, there are some other references to 50 units and.
So those, those references are different. There's a, that's capped. So there's a, there's a minimum fee. Even if you opt-out, you still have to pay the minimum fee. I don't remember what it is right now. I think it's like $8 a unit. But once, if you have a 100-unit apartment complex and you've opted out, you only pay for 50 units for that minimum fee. It's not the, it's just a cap on that vacancy fee.
Okay. Do you want to make the motion to place it on that? So I'll make a motion to place this item on the October 7th Agenda. Do you have a second?
Second.
Now call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. There we go. And that moves forward.
Yeah, to be placed on the October 7th, 2025 Legislative Agenda. Okay. Is there any further council comment this evening? Is there any administration comment? I don't think so. Our next committee meeting is October 29th, 2025 at 6 o'clock PM here in council chambers. All agenda items are due by 12 noon on October 22nd, 2025. It is 8:00 AM and our meeting is adjourned. Everyone have a phenomenal evening and even rate the rest of the week.
Yes. Have a good night. Mics off.